I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education for a budget workshop. Is there anyone here for public participation concerning the budget? No signups?
Nope.
No signups, no one here. We are going to move forward with our budget workshop and up front, up front, up first is Special Education.
Thank you.
Before Jen and Marissa get started, I just want to point out Sheila already passed out the budget questions. Hopefully, everybody got the email if you have any questions. You can just load them right up to that FY twenty-five budget questions doc. Oh, I gotta call Ron too. And then, and then you can, you can put them, put them right in there and we'll get them. So these were some of the questions that we remembered from the other night that we had written down. I know some people had put, put some of them in, but they're there for you to look at. And if anyone has any questions, even, you know, by the end of the night, please feel free to, we can come back to it.
And you'll see there's one not answered because we didn't quite have time to answer that.
That one came, that one was coming in as we were wrapping up. Jen, just give me one second.
Are you going to use the slides?
Can I clarify the question?
Yeah.
For? It was that, but it also was per school. I mean, you share resources between schools. So if we can break that down further, I think it would be helpful.
Hey, Ron. Ron, sorry, we had already started. So question number four, how many special education students do we have per grade? And then what was the second part of that question?
By school.
Ah, by school.
Sharing resources.
Gotcha. Okay. By grade.
We consolidated it because we figured you guys wouldn't want it like that, but we can split that up.
Let me complicate that.
We'll add it.
Ron, I apologize. We started, I forgot to, I forgot to call you in at first. So we've already started the meeting. Jen and Marissa are just ready to get started with special ed.
Ready?
You're good. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So thank you to Chrissy for meeting with Marissa and I to review the proposed budget. We appreciate your time. Now, before we begin reviewing our trend data, it's important to understand the overall extent of the needs of our special education students in grades pre-K through twelve. So in the past fourteen months, our special education population has soared to five hundred and eighty-four, which we've talked about. This, this number is not only historically the highest number of identified students, it also represents an increase of identified students with complex needs. So when I mention the increasing complexity of needs, I'm referring to the following. Since November of two thousand twenty-two, we registered seven high-cost students, twenty-two, we completed twenty-two psychiatric evaluations. Sorry, lost my place there. We outplaced five students due to mental health issues. We funded tutoring for students in psychiatric facilities and provided transportation for students attending intensive outpatient programs and partial hospitalization programming. In addition to these needs, our special education staff has supported a growing number of students in pre-K through twelve with reading, writing, and math needs. So these newly identified needs were the factors taken into consideration when building this budget. When comparing the enrollment over the past five years, a significant increase exists. Two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year yielded the highest increase of identified students moving into the district with a total of forty-seven move-ins in one year. The registrations dropped a bit in the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year with a total of thirty-two, however, still significant increases. As of December two thousand twenty-three, we are tracking a bit less than ten students to date. Overall, the increases are considerable since the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. As stated previously, the most important takeaway from this data is not necessarily the number of students, but the complexity of the needs that impact staffing and programming and funding. These concerns have been highlighted consistently throughout our monthly special ed updates. Okay, so this slide illustrates the referral and eligibility data. So if we look in the two thousand nineteen, twenty-two school year, we're at sixty-two percent of referred students who were made eligible. There were fifty-five referrals in that year. A year later, in two thousand twenty, twenty-two-one, sixty-six percent of students referred pre-K through twelve were made eligible for services. In comparison, only thirty-four percent of referred students were not found eligible. This trend continued in twenty-one, twenty-two school year, in which seventy-nine percent of referred students were made eligible for services. During the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the highest referral and eligibility rates occurred. Out of a hundred and forty-nine student referrals, a hundred and thirteen of those students were found eligible for services. So as of December of this year, of two thousand twenty-three, sixty-four percent of students referred were made eligible for services. And you can see the rate of the eligibility is commensurate with the last three years. But also, we see there's a bit of a dip in the preschool referrals, but the K- twelve referrals are continuing to occur. This slide illustrates the special education count on October first and the end of the school year. A steady increase in the past five years impacts our overall budget. To date, our prevalence rate is sixteen point five percent of Monroe's overall student population. We are below the state average, which is seventeen percent. The growth amongst our cohort in the past five years is significant. We have increased our enrollment by a hundred and eleven identified students since the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Okay, we'll move to staffing requests. So as Joe reviewed in his executive summary, this budget includes one point seven special education teachers and a point five speech and language pathologists. Currently, we have thirty-nine point two special education teachers servicing five hundred and eighty-four students. We have not had this number of teachers since the two thousand nineteen, twenty-two school year, in which we had thirty-nine point four teachers supporting four hundred and sixty-four students. So if we just, I'm just going to briefly go over the staffing request because I know we talked about them before. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So the Masic one point oh special education teacher, we discussed that. We're looking to offset caseloads, which are between twenty and twenty-three. Also help with the students who are coming up from the middle school, who are receiving structured literacy programming, and typically that service needs to be done one-to-one. In addition to that, we need to add an adjusted curriculum math course, and we also have the Unified PE course that's coming. It's going to be COTAT, which is going to be great. So that's for Masic. I'm going to kind of mix it up here a little bit. So the point three special education teacher at Stepney and the point four Monroe Elementary School teacher, together, we're asking to make them one point oh's each. And right now, and Joe had mentioned this, we are currently, they currently are one point oh's at this moment. We were lucky to get extra IDA funding in the fall, so we were able to fund the additional FTE with that, with that money that was given to us.
So there are budgets that's point six and point seven this year. We were able to make them one point oh, one point oh.
For the funding. So it's, it's obviously needed because it's happening right now. So I, I don't know whether or not we're going to get that money next year. We may, but it's not, it's not a guarantee, which is why we're putting in the request to make them whole. And then the other piece was the point five speech and language pathologist at Stepney, and I think we talked about that on Tuesday. But I have to talk about that more, but the caseload is, is quite large and she needs help. So we're asking for an additional point five, which will give us a one point five at Stepney for speech.
Can I just inquire about that a little bit? You said at Stepney, the speech pathologist caseload was seventy IEP students? What about the caseload for the speech pathologist at Fort Hallow, which is a bigger school? What's her caseload?
So there are one point five speech and language pathologists there and also a full-time speech and language pathology assistant. I have to get to the exact numbers of them, but they're in the fifties. The one point oh there is in the fifties.
She was like around like fifty-six? I think that they were like high eighties total combined together.
High eighties.
I believe they were like close to ninety at the beginning of the school year. I'm, I'm not sure right now, Alan, but that's where they were in the beginning of the school year.
We can get those exact numbers. Okay, moving on to tuition public. So for tuition public, which is, you know, another driver of our budget that has increased significantly. So if you look at the chart, we've increased three hundred, three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from the current school year to next year. This increase considers the students who moved into the district between November of two thousand twenty-two to the present. In addition, it also supports the five students we outplaced to CES, ACES, and REACH. The twenty-seven thousand dollars in summer public tuition directly correlates to that tuition public. Those students are in need of extended school year services. So that's why those two increases are there.
I'm sorry, that represents how many students? I guess I can go back, right, to?
Yes, it represents.
Five, is that the outplacements?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight students. Between the tuition public, tuition, between tuition public and private. So I was just talking about the public right now. We're going to talk about the private. So that's total. Tuition private costs increased as well. A three hundred thousand dollar increase in private tuition and a sixteen thousand dollar increase for private summer expenses have been calculated to support outplaced students at schools such as Foundation School, Charles F. Hayden, as well as the Pinnacle School. As stated earlier, these outplacements are therapeutic day programs for students who have, need a higher level of care with regulating their emotions. Okay, so in transportation, this is district-wide. I think you can speak to probably anybody in any district, and we talked about this the other day in regards to sports. But also for us in special education, our transportation lines have, have increased significantly. So due to our programming changes for preschool, that's why that line looks like it's increased so much to seventy-seven thousand dollars. And that was because we had to add another extra bus on because of our new model. So similarly, our tuition summer line has increased by thirteen point nine percent with additional students outplaced and in need of extended school year programming. It should be noted that our transportation system-wide line encompasses any student, regular education or special education, in need of transportation due to medical reasons. So an example would be if a student broke their leg and they weren't able to ride on the All-Star buses, we, we have to provide transportation for them. So we'd be providing private transportation for them back and forth to home for the extent of the time that they're recovering post-surgery.
Do you have a total on, on all of the transportation?
All of the transportation?
Yeah, just, I see it all separated line by line.
Yeah, I could get it for you. I, I, I'm sure I have it here somewhere, but I definitely could get it for you.
Greg, you mean the total increase?
Well, over a million dollars.
Right, Greg, you mean the total increase?
Total increase, yeah.
Yeah, okay, right. Then were, um, were, were your slides updated after, after this? Because not every line is lining up.
Yeah, we're not matching.
Then, then the handouts?
You're not matching?
Sorry, no.
Oh, no, that's okay. I can, I'll be right for you. Yeah, I did update them.
Okay.
So I updated them today, yes. I'll, I'll definitely send that to you. I'll do it at the end of this, that's fine. Um, okay, so moving on to excess cost. So our excess cost grant comparison, if we look at twenty-one, twenty-two, we received four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Last year, we received seven hundred thousand dollars, which was amazing. And this year, we're looking at an estimate of five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Why the huge difference last year? It's because historically, we've received seventy percent for years and years and years, but last year was the first year that the state was able to give us back more money. So we received about eighty-six percent last year. We are hoping that we get much more than seventy percent this year, but we can't guarantee it. We'll know in the next three weeks, as I have been saying, we're going to get our first installment of excess cost. And then from there, we can kind of check out our percentage. There's lots of conversation about getting more, but we're, we're not sure yet, so.
But a five seventy-five is based on the seventy percent we're talking?
Yes, the five seventy-five is, yes, based on, on seventy-five percent, seventy percent, sorry.
Who's, who's like researching and writing for the grants?
We are. Marissa and I, yes.
Okay.
Greg, we don't have a grant writer, unfortunately. The staff does a lot of that work on their own, depending on their departments, and they've done a great job with it, but at some.
It's commendable, the work you're doing. It's a lot of work.
It is.
Question? Yep. Okay, so I put this in here so that we can look at the calculation for excess cost. So if you look at this excess cost, our per people expenditure has raised to eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. That's set by the state. And we multiply that by four point five percent to get our threshold. So the eighty-three thousand dollars is our threshold. So in order for a student to be considered high cost, they, we have to spend that much money or more. So here's a sample of a student whose tuition is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. That includes their tuition, their transportation, any kind of equipment they may need, any kind of related services or para educator support. So that's, that span encompasses that a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So we take that number, a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, we subtract the threshold, and we get the sixty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which you can see on the screen. And then we get seventy percent of that. So the, so the forty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars is what comes back to us. So obviously, the takeaway of this is that we spend a hundred and three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars, and we get back the forty-seven six ninety-six. And that's how the excess cost grant is calculated.
And there's lag.
A lot of lag.
Yes, yes.
Check to arrive. But theoretically, excess cost was supposed to be, I mean, it's never been funded at a hundred percent. Supposed to be, you're supposed to spend four and a half times your per people expenditure. We should be paying two thousand dollars, not paying a hundred. It should stop at three thousand.
Especially if like all the mandates that's.
I know.
The twenty-two, moving age to twenty-two, et cetera.
Right, and surplus right now.
Right. So this entire budget was predicated on the fact of the, on the students who we have right now. We're always budgeting for who we have right now. And as you know, because I speak every month, that things can change at any minute in special ed. It doesn't matter what time of year it is. It could even be summer, where students' needs are changing. So this is the best estimate that we can give at this time. And Marissa and I and Cindy were always working to make sure that we are as fiscally responsible as possible, but also supporting the students with all the needs that they have.
I think, I know that part of the reason why, you know, you started with the complexity of needs slide is to emphasize that. The needs of the kids have changed tremendously. So we've talked about that before, and the difference in, you know, in special education and, and multilingual learning. The needs have changed pretty drastically.
Go ahead. I need to say. Go ahead.
Can you quantify the benefit of the vans on the transportation line?
Yes, absolutely. So the benefits of the vans are that we are saving money in transportation system-wide in regards to the vocational program and also our community-based program. So to ballpark, I'd say we're looking at probably about sixty thousand, maybe a little bit more every year. So that's very helpful. But the benefit in and of itself is just the flexibility we have in the program, and it makes both programs, and it makes them even stronger because our kids are able to, you know, be flexible and do things differently. But they are excellent. We have excellent people that are driving for us, and it's going really well.
I think it's a good footnote for the transportation cost slide, that, you know, you're making unbelievable benefit in doing that, so.
It's been great.
Do you get any return on Medicaid reimbursement at all?
We do, but it's not, it's not much. It actually pretty much covers the fees that we need to pay for, yes.
That's what I figured.
The nineteen psychiatric evaluations?
It's twenty-two. Actually, twenty-two, and I will rerun this for you before the end of the meeting if I, if we can find a color copier. I apologize about that. It's actually twenty-two since November.
Do you have one psychiatrist's views?
We have two that we utilize, and they're excellent, and they're always available to us, which is wonderful.
Do you pay, like, when you're paying them, is it like per evaluation, or is it?
Right now, we're just paying per evaluation.
Twenty-two's not bad.
You think it's a lot?
Considering it's.
That sounds like December, right?
And any other questions? No?
Any? Any benefit affiliations with the hospitals when it comes to psychiatric help?
Yeah, they don't have availability.
They do psychiatric evaluations on the students when they're in the hospital, but it's not specific to education. So it's really, while it's helpful to the families and for, you know, treatment, moving forward after they leave, it, it really doesn't help us so much with the education piece.
Dr. Day from Hyford Health was, was trying to start in-school programs. I don't know if there's any possibility, but.
Who is it?
Dr. Day.
Dr. Day.
He's trying to do a Hyford Health program psychiatric.
Second step.
Well, if he opens it, he'll be very busy very quickly.
In a second.
Yeah, there's not a lot of psychiatrists out there that'll work with teenagers.
No.
They're minimal.
And even like the, the niche cases that we're seeing really need a specialized person that can kind of prove it.
I know parents can't find them. They're just not out there, or they're booked.
I was just going to say, it's the waitlist that are the really, the difficult part, which is why we're really lucky that we have the two that we do.
I have a question. It's, out of curiosity, when it comes to the time you spend researching and writing for grants and applying for grants, how many hours, you don't have to answer it now, but I'm curious as to how much, how many hours? Like, what is that equivalent?
So we really work off one large grant, the IDA grant, and it's, it's quite a lot of money. It's like seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that's the grant. So we don't, we just have to prepare it, per se. We don't have to ask for the money specifically. So it takes time to, to prepare that, but other than that, we don't actually spend a ton of time looking out for grants and things like that, so.
Those are grants that they automatically, every district automatically gets. So it's not like we're, you know, competing for something, right?
Are there ones that are out there that we could compete for?
Yes, I'm sure, for sure, yes.
We, we brought this up a lot in the past, our administrative fees that we can get, but it still falls on the educators.
Yeah, still.
I mean, when I taught the thirty-five years I did and the grants I got here, it was all on me.
Okay. So what are you doing, Jeff? Thanks.
All right, thank you. I'm moving along. Hi, Mike, how are you?
Afternoon, guys, how are you?
Good.
It is evening. So here to talk about curriculum instruction and also professional development is wrapped up in there. And, you know, thanks to Dave for coming to meet me one early morning and starting today, talking about these budget lines that really address all students and teachers throughout our district pre-K twelve. You know, taken together as a budget, it is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, the two things of curriculum instruction and professional development. This year, that should overall increase. It's pretty close to flat of two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. These five bullets are things that you have heard us talk about many, many times in front of you that are continuing to be programs, issues, mandates that we have to address in our schools, and we address very much through these lines in this, in this portion of the budget. So certainly, science of reading, resources and training is going to become even more important in the coming years as we look at how we move forward with the compendium of resources, bringing outside sources, making outside, excuse me, trainers, looking at other resources to support science of reading. We've started our work with illustrative math last year, continued through it a lot this year, having really good success in our classrooms with it. We do not want to lose that energy and that momentum, so that is something that we want to continue putting effort into. The third one is a new one because I think last year at this time, ChatGPT was about a month old. And as you all know, artificial intelligence in the course of a year has become, you know, quite an important aspect of public education and all education. So number three up there is this artificial intelligence task force that you'll see. We're going to put together some groups to work this summer. We already actually started the work on it, doing some surveying and saying, what are we going to do with artificial intelligence as, as a school? What are our policies going to be about it? How do we utilize it in our classrooms? Because we know that we can't simply say, you know, ignore it. We're not going to do anything with artificial intelligence. It's here, it's happening. How do we leverage it the best to our ability? So that's an important thing that we've sort of added to the pot this year. Vision of the graduate will continue to be, you know, an important idea as we extend out and now go into the portfolio aspect of that, starting next year with students. So there are important curricular, instructional, and professional development needs around there, and certainly Ruler. Ruler has really taken off through our schools for social emotional learning and been very well embraced by schools and, and students. And we want to continue to put that effort into social emotional learning because we're seeing a lot of bang for our buck there with that.
Mike, can you talk more about the science of reading, resources, and training?
Sure, you bet. We, can we do, do it a little bit, the professional development one, do you want me to just go that way? Because I'm going to start with the curriculum and then we'll, because it really is part of that, too. First of all, the curriculum budget went down about thirty-one thousand dollars this year from last year. And really, the reason for it was, and you guys know, like textbooks, we just don't have, like, last year, we had a big out, out pay for AP US History and the Spanish One textbook, and those are big ticket items. This year, we don't have the big ticket items happening for us. So the biggest one is that AP Micro that you guys approved for seventy-six hundred dollars, which actually for, for a course is not really that expensive. So that's pretty, that's pretty good. So we did, we were able to make some savings there with the curriculum budget there. The other few things, you know, money put aside for our new financial literacy course, continuing to put a little money aside for the illustrative math resources, that Unified PE, we talked about having some of those, some materials for those students. And also business management, which we've talked about at Curriculum Council, and it's going to come, and we're going to do a presentation on the sixteenth to all of you guys. But that actually, that coverage is expected to come through the Perkins Grants, so that is a zero cost.
It's a one-time cost cover.
Yeah, because they're going to cover the cost of the books. So that's a, that's a good, that's a good piece.
Just for my clarification, when I see dollars in parentheses, it's in negative.
Oh, okay. From my humanities background, it looks really.
You're going to put on your finance head.
You thought he did a really good job.
I know, right? Exactly. Sorry about that. Apologize.
I was looking at all the savings.
I got the gold star. No, okay. Good to know. Next year, I have to have Greg be my BOE partner.
What happens when you get a board of finance person now on the board?
I know, that's good, that's good. So, so those are all things. You can see also in the other curriculum lines, you know, we, we really work to serve and support a lot of the K-five, you know, English, science, and math work system-wide, also in art, and we do, you know, Da Vinci is happening again next year. So that money is there for Da Vinci. We want to make sure that we provide that. This year, we actually had to use a lot of that, you know, system-wide art money also because we had to add some additional sections of art. And you know, you know, elementary art has a lot of consumables. We go into that kind of work. And so as our school gets, as our schools get bigger, especially in art and science, there's, it's like the world of consumables there. So that is there. There's some testing, you know, our OLSAT eight, which we do for fifth graders, went online this year, which is great. So that's, that's a cost that happens with us. And then there's just some other just generalized supplies for curriculum that we need to have for Vision of the Graduate and other district-wide programs that come up. The curriculum writing, next year, we have that AP Micro, we have the Unified PE, we have the business management. We're also looking at our elementary music programming. We're really trying to make a good effort on having a more consistent curriculum across the three schools. We have, we only have one music teacher who was here a year ago. I think all the other three are brand new, so it's really a great opportunity for us to look at elementary music and hit a reset on that. So Mike Yance and I are working with them, so we have some hours in that. Certainly, we want to make sure we have hours set aside for the science of reading, for teachers to work on curricular opportunities there. The math, K-five, six, eight, nine, twelve, that continues to be an area that we want to put, you know, some dollars and hours into for teachers. Ruler and NGSS and Vision of the Graduate, like I said. And the last thing is the AI Institute. That would be the summer where we want some teachers to come together, you know, for a couple of days and really work through some policy. Trumble put together last year, had a great AI Institute that, you know, I've been talking to them about that, to really put a policy together to start, get teachers comfortable, you know? We started with a survey this week, and it was interesting to get those responses from teachers about their level of comfort and their fears and their, you know, what they need for PD, because before, we could have students really work with it. We got to make sure the teachers know how to work with it also. So that's going to be an important thing for us to really address, you know, quickly, because you know how fast that's moving, AI. Okay, so that's, that's, that's the curriculum side of it. Any questions about that?
Yeah, with the AI, does it cover plagiarism risk?
Well, you know, that's what's really interesting because it's about, like, they made a change to the academic honesty policy up here about how do we do this? And that's, that's part of the policy problem. One of the things they're doing now is you also have to hand in your Google history. You know what I mean? Because what it, what you know is, when you do a ChatGPT, you copy and paste, and you put it into your Google thing. So when you do the history and the whole paper comes up after one's keystroke, that's part of the thing. But part of the other piece is, what does it mean for the kind of assessments that we're designing? What's interesting is the vision of the graduate assessments, all those projects, those assured experiences that we're going through. They're almost, when we're asking teachers to design, they're almost un-AI-able because they require kids to work in groups and give presentations and utilize, and if we want to utilize, like, hey, you could use AI to answer these questions, but then you do this with the work of it. So it's how do we utilize AI? My own child, who's, you know, in college, her final exam was, here's a question about a reading we did, put it into. So it's how do we utilize A I? My own child, who's, you know, in college, her final exam was, here's a question about a reading we did, put it into Chat G P T, print that, and then respond with what was missing from this, what did you learn in class that was missing from Chat G P T? So she had to write an essay utilizing A I, but also her own knowledge. Like those kind of durable, what they're calling durable assessments, are those things that we have to get teachers comfortable with and get students to be sort of aware of.
Until A I is smart enough, which that's the evolution of it.
Absolutely. And that's the whole thing that I, I bet, you know, for how many remaining years I'll be, you know, here, you know, we'll be like, oh yeah, we put money into A I next year. Make sure we put money into prep for A I, because it's where it's, yes, reality.
I have a question, Mike. Just, I want to jump back, I'm off topic a little bit, but I'm really excited, obviously, about the ruler.
Yep.
But all this talk around the high needs of students and social emotional needs, I brought this up last year, I'm going to bring it up again, so sorry for beating a dead horse. Have you guys talked about updating the comprehensive school counseling curriculum? Because I know in two thousand nineteen, the state really aligned with ASCA, we talked about adding more school counseling time, I think it was to Stephanie, right?
Right.
But if that curriculum is not in line with the needs of the kids, I don't know how long it's been since that's kind of been looked at.
Right. And Ann and I have actually, or actually, Ann and I had a conversation in December to really work on, you know, how does, where is our curriculum right now with that? So it is definitely a, you know, Ann and I are very aware that we have to put that priority.
Because I just think, like, special ed gets blamed for everything, but the reality is, it's the only place that kids could go.
Okay, yeah.
What's the plan? Does Ann have a plan moving forward or?
Well, what Ann and I have in plan for this summer, so we were working with like both the health curriculum and, you know, because there's a lot of overlay, especially at the elementary schools with health and guidance curriculum, how that is, is working with the health and the guidance curriculum is, where, where are the opportunities for teachers to go into the classrooms? Where are they, you know, being able to have, do we need to engage with larger or, you know, assemblies? And how do we, how do we really support the guidance thing?
Well, I think that's where like the curriculum, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Right, exactly. Yeah. And so Ann and I have already talked about that, that we know that this is the thing that we have to go to this spring. I'm going to be, I'll be honest with you, with science of reading, with, you know, things, I don't want that to get by the, by the wayside, and we really looked at ruler as a good sort of opening, you know, you know, beginning to how we can really support this and how this works. So Ann and I do have some work to do with, you know, that curriculum piece, so.
I'm just wondering if there, if there would be a budget impact if you needed some kind of like support or training.
I mean, the nice thing about sort of ruler and vision of the graduate, we've used some of the vision of the graduate money for, you know, guidance curriculum. You know what I mean? Because that's part of the guidance curriculum, I mean, that's part of vision of the graduate, like the, you know, the empathy and compassion and, you know, all that work about social emotional learning is part of vision of the graduate. So the nice thing about our vision of the graduate sort of structure as far as P D and with curriculum writing is it gives us that opportunity to spend that money also on school counseling.
Okay.
Okay? Because like the math and the science of reading, that speaks to, that'll speak to vision of the graduate also, but we have sort of earmarked that also. Okay?
Okay.
Where does guidance fall in the hierarchy of things like who would Ann report to?
Okay, it hasn't been called guidance in ten years, Alan, stop saying that.
What's up?
I said, stop saying guidance, it hasn't been called guidance in ten years.
Who does school, like, who would Ann report to? I mean, they're not in special ed, I mean.
I mean, school counselors talk to generally the principals, you know, work with their school counselors on, you know, what's going on in the school and what the needs of the school are. So Ann sort of oversees the K twelve piece, and the counselors talk to both Ann and also, you know, the school principals.
So we are in line though with the state model and the ASCA model, I guess is my, my goal.
I think that would be our goal.
Okay.
Is that we really need to, yeah. And I would not want to speak, you know, I want to talk a little bit more to Ann before I answer that question.
And Chrissy, they.
I'm not trying to beat you up, I'm sorry if it, like, appears that way, I just feel like all we hear about, and it's not just a Monroe issue, obviously, but all that anyone talks about anymore is social emotional health and, you know, the, the high needs of kids that were their trauma, like, you know, based care were providing in schools and, and how significantly it's impacting, you know, everything. So we could do all the reading and math in the world if kids are not, you know, in a good place with their mental health and with their, you know, coping mechanisms and social skills, then.
And I think a lot of our SRBI structures that we've been talking about in the last few years has been also to not just focus on the academic and our SRBI structures, to really talk about the, the behaviors. And, you know, the school counselors are in all those SRBI meetings, the school psychologists are in that to talk about.
I know they are, yeah.
No, and I'm just saying, like, so.
It's brought up.
We want to make sure, because I think they do have a real clear understanding that they're not going to be able to pass that math test if they're, you know, not happy to go home at the end of the day, you know what I mean? Like, that's not going to happen. So how do those two things work together? And I know that that is, you know, conversations that have happened and are happening, you know, pretty consistently. All right. Our professional development budget, it is up thirty three thousand, and that's really, the major driver of that is because last year, we took all the external vendor services, anybody who came from the outside to support teachers in, in any sort of instructional piece or strategy piece, there's nothing in this board of ed budget of, you know, year twenty four. It was all taught, brought to our app restor, so we had to bring that back in, we brought in less than we had this year. And there is a bit of an offset, because one of the things that, you know, you might remember is we're required by the state to pay, you know, team mentors a stipend every year, and last year, with the big turnover we were about to see, we ended up hiring twenty eight new teachers. What happened though was we hired a lot of teachers that already had the certification, did not need team. So we had, we had, we had on budgets for a lot, and right now, we don't, I mean, who knows, but like, right now, we're not seeing like they're going to have a huge turnover next year, so I was able to pull that line down a lot. We budgeted a lot for it because we didn't know what was, you know, we knew we were losing a lot of people last year, and we were gaining a lot of new teachers, but we ended up not having to do, and that was part of that, actually a transfer the other day to use some sort of P D money for some of our assessments, because we didn't use that money. So that's a bit of a difference there. But to talk to the science of reading piece and sort of what we're talking about, you know, it's still an iterative process, you know, we're meeting with the state in two weeks to talk more, get a little bit more feedback about where we are with our compendium. Like we had sort of, Joe had explained, we had gotten approval for what we're doing in phonemic awareness and phonics and fluency, and where we were falling short was in comprehension vocabulary. We know that, like, pretty much every district in this state, work needs to be done. There are holes to be filled in with science of reading. And so we're looking at, well, what are our next steps about looking at programs? What are our next steps about, what do we need to do to meet this need? State, we need some clarification, because part of the clarification is, you know, when they talked about the program that, you know, we utilized for comprehension, they were talking about the, they looked at what the program was five years earlier, the earlier publication of it. So what would it mean, what would we need to do in order to fill that gap, given that programming? You know, and we're, we, we understand that we may need to look at other places to get that programming in. What we do definitely know we need, and that's one of the things about this, you know, budget, we are not committing to a contract with Mossflower or Teachers College or anything. What we do definitely know we need is we need to have continued professional development in the science of reading for our teachers. We're really lucky, we got a lot of new teachers this year, they came in with a lot of great science of reading experience, they're O G trained, they're Wilson trained stuff. But we have a lot of teachers who've been with us for a while, and they're great teachers, but they need some training. And you know, I mean, that training is so expensive, because they know that this train, bring these people in, they get, they're asking top dollar. But we need those experts, because it is a lot of new learning, it is a lot of, you know, scientific, you know, structured learning that we want to make sure our, you know, K one, two, three teachers have under their belt. So that's where we're going, you know. Kim and I, you know, having dinner together tonight to sort of talk through, all right, what's our next steps? What are our next steps? We're going to talk to them when we find this out, like, what can we do to sort of expand out and support our science of reading instruction better? So there is money that we did receive, the right to read grant, we received a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the state, which is a tiny little drop in the bucket, as we all know, for the cost of what these programs actually are, but it is the start of something. So we know we can utilize that, and we can utilize that for programming that has been approved by the state, and also professional development that comes only directly from those programs. You can't like, you have to hire, like, if it's Hegarty, you have to hire Hegarty people. You can't use it to hire, like, somebody from SAS or crack who knows it well. You can't use your money that way, it has to go directly to that vendor, which is really interesting, you know, that's a whole nother conversation. But that, that's, you know, so we know we're going to need that money. We know we're going to use that money, we're going to have to use that money for resources, for materials, for P D. So this money for literacy and illustrative math, forty five thousand dollars, it's great, it seems like a lot, it really, you know. One day for U Fly to come in is six thousand dollars, one day for somebody to come in and do a training from, you know, the University of Florida Literacy Institute is six thousand dollars. So they got, you know, they got us in a hard place.
Could it potentially be, though, that once you fill these two areas, you may end up between what you've already done, what you have to continue to do, and then what you have to add for the comprehension vocabulary, end up spending more than if we had just used one of the five programs on the list?
Well, the thing is.
And if you think about the time and resources that you're having to put into it.
If we had, if we used one of the five programs that were originally in the list.
I mean, they were expensive, I know.
Right, where, plus the P D that went along with it was, was kicking up to a million dollars, you know what I mean? Like, when you look at the compendium of resources, like, we already have Hegarty that we're utilizing, so we don't have to do that. We already have a bunch of U Fly already happening that we piloted this year, which is a much, I mean, it's not as expensive of a program. It is for the P D, but as far as the resources go, it's not as expensive of a program, you know, so that, those pieces, you know, the fluency piece, you know, we would probably want to buy some more decodables that we have, we've spent a lot of money on decodables in the district already. So the other piece is, what is the not, what they call the, you know, the knowledge building part of it? You know, and part of those compendiums is something like Bookworms, which is an open source, so it's an open source material. You do have to buy the trade books that go along with it. So I hear what you're saying, Chrissy, but I also.
Have you kept track of it? I didn't know if you kept track, like, if you've been keeping track of like.
Yeah, I mean, we were looking at the original ones, I think we were looking at like three quarters of a million dollars.
Right.
I don't think we're going to go near three quarters of a million dollars.
Good, okay.
And, you know, and it was, what's interesting is, when this whole thing started, they said, these are the five programs and that's it. And then in December, they're like, oh, those programs, oh, and plus these two other, plus if you have this group, like, the whole plan, the whole thing changed so much. You know, jumping into something earlier without, like, waiting to see how this sort of rolled out with the state too. You know, we may have said, oh, we would have been much happier to do these, because the nice thing about the compendium is, we get to a lot of ways choose what's best for our kids. And some of those planned programs were very, you know.
They're canned, yeah.
Canned, basically, you know what I mean? And they didn't have that sort of flexibility that the compendiums ended up giving, and which are approved by the state now, so. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, definitely.
So what, so are you looking at programs approved by the state?
Yes.
Okay.
We are. We're still going to talk, we're still talking to state, still, you know, in two weeks' time, to talk about, like, we want to understand from your waiver, you said that two thousand eighteen Teachers College and not, we do not do two thousand eighteen, you asked us for the dates in the waiver, we said we use the two thousand twenty three versions of it that have these, you know, these things, we need a little bit of clarification about, you know, is that true that this is also not meeting the needs of it? You know, it's part of the, what they always said to us was going to be an iterative process, that they were going to talk through all these things with us, and became not an iterative process with them at all, you know what I mean? It became a, a, nope, this is it, and, you know, we're not going to talk through those pieces with you. Listen, if there are better things for us to do for our kids, we're going to do that. You know, Kim and I already, you know, have balls with, with two of our new, you know, resources, those two new resources of wit and wisdom and Bookworms to talk to those people. C E S has all those things available for us to look at. So, you know, we have till July two thousand twenty five to do some implementation. So we have a year and a half, I know it's not a lot of time, but, you know, we're going to do what we can fiscally, responsibly, and, you know, what's best for our kids. And we're going to continue to, like, look at it in those ways. So we're not, we're certainly not going, we're only doing T C and that's it, we're looking at.
Well, Teachers College doesn't exist anymore.
Teachers College, as I say, does exist. It's Mossflower, which takes on the, the people who come in and do the P D, that's, that's that piece. I mean, Teachers College still exists, you still can buy it at Heinemann, still exists as a unit of study, they're still printing, they just printed, their twenty twenty three thing just got printed through Columbia, so it, that still exists. It's not, it's run by Mary Ironworth now, who was, you know, Lucy's, you know, right hand man. Lucy went off and is just doing Mossflower now, but T C certainly still does exist. Not with the Lucy.
Hey, Mike, can we change to math for a minute?
Sure, you bet.
I just had one quick question. I think it's related to this.
Sure.
So you, you had mentioned hiring twenty eight teachers, and the majority of them had a cert, a certification, was that the S R T? Or what certification was that?
Oh, no. So when you get, when you are a teacher in Connecticut, and you first become a teacher, first couple of years, you have to do team. And then you get, you get certified, it's called best still in the, in the budget line, because it used to be the best program, and they changed to the team program, and the budget line remained the best.
Like a two-year orientation program for beginning teachers.
Yep. But we hired teachers that had three, like, three or more years' experience.
They had to have been, if, if a teacher is, you have to be in a district for four years before you're tenured. And during that time, the first two years, you're a part of team, and that is, it gives you an extra support so that they've got a mentor that they're meeting with on a regular basis. They're doing, writing these, these three thousand word essays on like classroom environment, instruction, planning, assessment.
Okay.
Over the course of the two years, they'll do two each year. And if they're tenured in a district, when they come to the next district, all they need to be with us is two years before they come tenured, but they've already done team, and that's, that's all set.
Okay.
So our, many of our teachers that we got this year had already completed team somewhere else.
Okay.
And so we didn't have to budget. The state, many years ago, used to pay teachers to be the mentor to support them during that first two years.
Okay.
And then, I don't even know how many years ago, the state pulled that funding back and said, it's basically on districts. So we would have to budget it every year.
Okay.
Knowing that we were having so many teachers retiring, we budgeted expecting more of them to need it, and then they didn't. So it was a good thing for us for this year, and now we, we don't have a lot of teachers retiring for next year, so we didn't have to budget as much.
But does that just move that expense from a development to more of a salary side? Because if they're tenured and they have that team best, they have, they can have higher salary, right, or?
No, that doesn't play into salary. Their salary is based on college experience. So like, if they're, if they have their bachelor's, if they have the master's, or something called the sixth year, and then it's also based on the number of years' experience. So it's, it's two parts.
Okay. Mostly other lines, oh, you were talking about math, sorry, go ahead.
No, go.
No, no, I, I was moving forward without answering your question.
Move forward at the end when you ask questions, I'll bring up math, go ahead.
Okay. So mostly the other lines all stay pretty consistent with it, you know, professional development in-house, stay consistent with this year. There are some certain things that we always do, we have to do, you know, special ed has some P M T training for teachers, often we pay for that, you know, in-house. Illustrative math, we try to do as much as possible, like train the trainer kind of model, like, if we send somebody to something, then they become, you know, they'll come and do P D for their colleagues, and we pay, you know, we get a good rate for that, we get a lot of bang for our buck through that sort of process.
Yeah, do you have any P M T trainers?
Yeah, we have two, three.
Oh, that's great. That's a huge saver.
Yep. So that's a good one. Like the A I, you know, put a little side on A I, so that that task force is going to be able to do some P D, you know, with the teachers next year also, and that's, you know, quite a savings, and you get a lot for that too, so. But all the other things are pretty, you know, consistent. We talked on Tuesday, you know, about conferencing course fees, you know, we talked about that with the elementary school. And Ashley had, you know, referenced, you know, I have lines for that to help support that too, as things go for the district, to help support teachers who want to go to specific conferences or workshops. And I'll work with the principals, and I'll be like, all right, I pay sixty, you pay forty, yeah, but you know what I mean? We try to make sure we sort of, you know, spread the wealth and get teachers to where they want to be and where they need to be, so.
You also use grant, title, title one and title two grant funds.
We have about, you know, we, we have grants in about a hundred eighty three thousand dollars in grants that come, title one, title two, title four grants every year. You know, around, you know, they stay around the same, they went down this year from last year, surprise, but we utilize a lot of that money for professional development and other workshops and, you know, materials for professional development. Like, a lot of what we did this year with our new T Vow was encourage teachers to, like, get resources, to do P D, to read books and stuff, and we're using a lot of that title two money to sort of support that kind of book study and all that, so that's, that's helpful. Any questions about math?
Oh, yeah, why? I applaud the certified math interventionist, and I see it's only like thirty thousand more by then, by the time we look at it. Curriculum head wise, Mike, you know, math, math scores have affected us for a long time, so I applaud that.
Yep.
As being the head of curriculum, what are you going to do to help that person? What are you gonna do to help that person?
Yeah, you know, and I think part of the thing is when we're looking for that person is someone who really sort of understands those concepts of illustrative math, that application. What we see so much of, where we see the disconnect, you know, and I know we've talked a lot about it at the middle school, is that application piece. As things become more complicated in math, students have more difficulty applying that learning in, you know, real world problems and such. And that's what's great about illustrative math, that new work of building thinking classrooms. And I know we talked about, you know, going from two to one, but like, having someone who can design assessments to support kids that we can ask to design assessments to support kids. I mean, the interventionists work twenty-five hours. They come in, they do their job very well, great people, and they leave. You know, a teacher stays. A teacher builds what they're gonna do all day long. They build their assignment, they build the assessments. They go into classrooms, they listen to what kids are saying and what they're struggling with, and they're able to go in and go, hey, let me do this. They can, this interventionist can become a lot, a lot, a lot of ways, you know, a co-teacher with teacher, a coach with teachers, a coach with kids about how to do it. So I think that's important and I think it's gonna be important to keep that going with illustrative math and have, have somebody who's familiar with it and comfortable with it in that role, so.
Mike, what other, um, districts are using an area of illustrative math?
Um, I.
Or other DIRG B districts?
Are you there right now? I know you have a list. Okay.
Oxford, who's doing it, and we know that Madison is trying it out. There are many districts that are trying out pieces of it, but there are less districts willing to say they are full all in. Remember a lot of this, in elementary school, it was only a couple of years ago. It was out longer in the middle school. So it's newer for our elementary school dis, districts and people. So we've been, um, a member of the Connecticut Consortium for Illustrative Math that meet regularly online. And we talk about how we're implementing it, moving it forward. And I think, um, Mike already mentioned that it's a problem solve based curriculum. So it's all about application and problem solving, which fits in beautifully with, um, building thinking classrooms. So around the state, those two pieces of the conversation are building out together. And I think we're all in the same footing in Connecticut as far as doing what we need to do best for kids and finding the best resources. So, um, not able to tell you which districts are really fully implemented in our DIRG B, but we're all in the process of talking about what's.
I'd like to get you more specifics, but like, but the state, like, the two things the state says for like, you know, sort of model resources are the Eureka Math and Illustrative Math. Those are the two that are really sort of pushing to say, these are the things that really meet our state standards and where we want kids to be with twenty-first century skills. So you're gonna see a combination. And actually, we have teachers who use elements of Eureka Math, you know, at certain times they're like, oh, we really like how, you know, Eureka Math does this so we could do it. Because all these things are so open source. I mean, materials do cost money when you wanna, you know, get certain things. But we have access to these things, which is really nice, these resources to sort of respond to it. But, um, I know that between you, I know, I know she has a document that has those names because we went through that. Um, so I can definitely get that.
Reference wise, you mentioned Madison and that was the one with the higher math score, is what we call off the chart. So that's a good resource.
Yep.
If I can add, um, you know, Mike and I sat down, even though his, his PD is up a little over thirty-three thousand, his curriculum is down thirty-one, so he did a good job in balancing that out, so, uh, and explaining the reasons for that. So it's a two thousand dollar increase for, for that in total, so. Dennis, go ahead.
I'll just, we have a thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars a person, right? Right? So I don't know how that math equates, one of my picket apples and oranges.
That's in the elementary.
That's a different line, that's a different budget line, yeah.
That's in the elementary lines.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else for Mike?
Thanks, Mike.
Cool, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so two things, uh, before we close. In the, um, budget questions, one of the big things that we asked Joe last meeting was how much of the proposed increase is contractual? And, um, this is worth noting, so six point two percent of the seven point one five percent increase is contractual. So ladies and gentlemen, that means that we have point nine five percent of budget, this discussion, or is it up budget? Point nine five percent.
And that primarily rests with the new, the new staff that we're hiring.
Um, so thanks for getting us that so quick. The other thing is, um, please remember that the next budget workshop is Tuesday, the ninth, here at six thirty. Does anybody have any other questions about budget? No? Mr. Steve?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Jerry. Can I have a second? By Greg. Any discussion? All in favor? Manamis, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.